Ladies and gentlemen, it's 6:00 PM, so we call the meeting in order for the Upson County Board of Commissioners for Tuesday, December 14th. If you would at this time, please rise for our invocation followed by our pledge.
Let us pray. Father, we come with bow and heart, thanking you for all you have been a blessing. We thank you for life, health, and strength. What we ask is to give a special blessing to the Board of Commissioners, give us the wisdom to make decisions that's in the best interest of the community and that are pleasing in your sight. Oh, also pray a special prayer for the people that was in the path of the hurricane a few days ago, and ask that you bring down your mercy upon them, fix them there. Father, as we enter the holiday season, we ask that you bless all of us, and let us be reminded that all gifts that came from the God did not come in a cardboard box wrapped in Christmas paper laying on the tree, but the best gift of all came, was born of a virgin, wrapped in swaddled clothes, and laid in a manger. Remind us again what this season is all about. Father, we ask this in your name. Amen.
Thank you. If you'd join me in the pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Wilder.
All right. Appreciate everybody coming tonight. All right. Well, first on the agenda is an executive session. I suspect this will take about 10 minutes, so we'll do that. I appreciate your patience, and let us go take care of a discussion about personnel. So at this time, is there a motion to enter executive session for personnel? Commissioner Jones, seconded by Commissioner Wilder. All those in favor? Commissioner Watson, unanimous, Jessica. So we'll be right back.
And did we ever name them before? We didn't, we didn't name them last year. So of the applicants, is there a motion on this appointment?
I'll make a motion to re-up Charles Rushton.
Okay, a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, seconded to reappoint Charles Rushton, Thompson Upson County Industrial Development Authority. Hearing no discussion. Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Chairman Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Okay, next, Thompson Upson County Office Building Authority. Commissioner James Ellington's term is up. Is there a motion on a reappointment to the OBA?
I think we need to reappoint James Ellington.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Motion made, seconded to reappoint Commissioner James Ellington to the Upson County Thompson Upson Office Building Authority. Hearing no discussion. Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Ellington?
Abstain.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Chairman Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Okay. We are going down next to the Thompson Upson County Records Advisory Board. Frances Trice, her term is up. She has, she has applied for reappointment. Is there a motion?
I have a motion that we accept Frances Trice, reappoint.
Is there a, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Chairman Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Okay, next is the Upson County Planning Commission. We have two, two individuals whose terms are up. They are both, they are both re-seeking, seeking reappointment. And that is Ms. Alicia McKinley and Mr. Johnny Dawson. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint both Ms. Alicia McKinley and Johnny Dawson to the Upson County Planning Commission.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to reappoint Ms. Alicia McKinley and Mr. Johnny Dawson to the Upson County Planning Commission. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Chairman Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Next is the Upson County Board of Assessors. Mr. David Callaway, his term is up. And he is seeking reappointment. And is there a motion on this?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint Mr. David Callaway to the Upson County Board of Assessors.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to reappoint Mr. David Callaway to the Upson County Board of Assessors. Hearing no discussion. Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Chairman Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Next, we have three positions up for the Upson County Board of Elections. Ms. Jessica Jones, Ms. Janice Bennett, and Mr. Roy Grubb. Terms are up. And we have multiple people seek, submit applications. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion that we, we appoint Ms. Brenda Dawson, Ms. Monika Ivey, and Ms. Jessica Jones to fill this, these three positions.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to appoint, reappoint Ms. Jessica Jones and to appoint Ms. Brenda Dawson and Ms. Monika Ivey to the Upson County Board of Elections. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Chairman Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Okay. Department of Family and Children's Services Board. Ms. Ruth Hatchet, his term is up. She's up for reappointment. She's expressed an interest in being reappointed. You have a list of individuals, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve the reappointment of Ruth Hatchet to the Defact Board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to reappoint Ms. Ruth Hatchet to the Defact Board. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Chairman Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Okay, next is the Hospital Authority. And this one's a little different. Just everybody's, we, we can submit up to, as the Board of Commissioners, we submit up to three names to the Hospital Authority and as a slate. So in this case, Mr. Steve Cade's term is up. He has expressed interest in continuing to serve. But we also have one other application from Jack Lau. I think I pronounced that correctly. Is there a motion on this appointment?
I'll make a motion that since we can approve three and they can pick the one they want, right?
Yes.
That we, we go ahead and, and appoint both of those to the Hospital Authority.
To the slate, okay, okay. All right, is there a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion made and seconded from Commissioner Ellington. To submit the slate of names for the Hospital Authority, Mr. Steve Cade and Mr. Jack Lau. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Chairman Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Okay, and lastly, we have the Three Rivers Region Council Non Public Member. This is a, a person that we, we appoint to serve on Three Rivers Region Council. And Ms. Hannah Arnett has served us. And she is no longer able to continue serving. And we have Ms. Adrian Shale interested in that position. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint Ms. Adrian Shale to the Three Rivers Council.
Okay, motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded to appoint Ms. Adrian Shale to Three Rivers Region Council as the non-public member of Upson County. Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Chairman Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Okay. And so we have a couple of appointments that we need to come back and visit. And so just for the public's knowledge, we do need some people to apply for. We have a position available in the Two Rivers Council. And to the Thompson Upson County Library Board. And we are also looking for folks interested in serving on the Thompson County Board of Health, Thompson Upson County Board of Health. So if you're interested, please submit an application so that we can put you to work. Because, you know, the, these are, this is work. And we're fortunate to have people that are willing to step up and do this. So thank y'all. So we'll move on. Next, this was an appointment of the county clerk. Is there a motion on appointment of the county clerk for 2022?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion to reappoint Ms. Jessica Jones as county clerk.
There's a second.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Ellington. Any discussion?
I think she'll do a good job.
I can only echo that. So, Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Chairman Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
All right, next is the appointment of the county attorney. Is there a motion on the appointment of the county attorney for 2022?
Well, I guess I'd like to appoint the English Law Firm again.
I have a motion to reappoint English Law Group.
They've done a pretty good job, so I think so.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded by, made by Commissioner Jones, seconded by Commissioner Ellington to reappoint English Law Group to serve as the Upson County County Attorney for 2022. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Chairman Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Thank you.
I heard hesitation.
It wasn't. Blame it on the internet.
Yeah, it's a long distance.
Yes. All right, next on the agenda is the discussion and approval of the resolution approving the FY 2022 budget. And before I pass the hat to Jason, I just want, I want to thank Jason and Alan and Jessica and the entire staff. For, this has been arduous, for some reason. I mean, it wasn't that it was arduous, it's been challenging to, to get a, a budget prepared and balanced to us at this point. We've got a lot going on. And, and I know, because, you know, I know Alan, you've been so responsive in this. I mean, every time we come by, we hit you with a, with a curve ball. And then next thing you know, you killed another tree and you got another budget. So I certainly appreciate, you know, everyone who's had a hand in, in this and getting this to, to this point. So with that, I'll, I'll pass the baton to the county manager, Jason.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a lot to add, I just want to point out a couple of things. Well, as is evident by the consent agenda, obviously, this is, this budget's been widely discussed over the last few months. Obviously, meeting after meeting, you're approving minutes for when we've had workshops and public hearings about this budget. But in its final form, in the resolution that's presented to you tonight, it's a general fund budget of nineteen million, one hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars. And roughly 6.5% increase over the previous year, which was seventeen million, nine five six. You'll see that in detail in Exhibit A is provided by the CFO. And then in Exhibits B through G, you'll see the special revenue funds. Just a couple of other items to point out. And for, just for the point of public consumption, this does include a 4.5%, 4.75% increase for all county employees, less our law enforcement. At the Sheriff's Department, the Sheriff's Department will receive a 15% increase under this budget. So those items have been incorporated into this resolution, into the exhibits and are presented for your approval tonight.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions, comments? That means we've done well as far as, I mean, as you, as you mentioned, you know, just looking at the number of meetings that were, the formal meetings and the number of minutes that have been compiled. And then the amount of work that's gone on daily in, in these offices to get this budget to this point. So with that, is there a motion to adopt the resolution as presented?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the 2022 budget. And the resolution.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there a? Okay, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let, I'm gonna, commission, motion made by Commissioner Jones, seconded by Commissioner Watson. Any discussion?
Other than I appreciate all the employees that work for Upson County, everyone.
Yes. The, you know, this is a, this is a balanced budget. And it is, it is hard to, you know, it's been a challenge. But, you know, we'll keep our, we will, we'll hope that, keep our fingers crossed and hope for prosperous 2022 as far as other forms of revenue. And certainly, you know, it's, we'd be putting our head in the sand if we, if we, if we told anybody, you know, out there that this does not include a possible probable increase in the millage rate. But we just don't know yet. We, we don't know, you know, a lot can happen between now and this summer. And so we'll, we'll, we'll work hard to, to be judicious and to, but we also know that we have this, this EMS issue that's coming at us pretty hard too. So that said, I, I do want to echo how much I appreciate everybody that puts on a name tag or comes to work for the citizens of this community every day. And I know it's, you know, we don't, we don't want to overlook anyone. And so thank y'all for putting this together. So any, any other comments or discussion?
I appreciate it, especially all the hard work Alan has to do. Crunching numbers is rough. I can see his ears spinning every once in a while.
He's good at it.
Rolling back, kind of like a slot machine, you know?
Good.
So I appreciate it.
There you are.
And Jason too, because Jason worked hard on it too.
Yeah, a lot of work went in this. Okay, so I have a motion made and seconded, hearing no further discussion. Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Chairman Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Thank y'all. All right, next on the agenda is the discussion and approval of architectural firm for the Justice Center. With that, I'll pass it to Jason and Alan, whichever one. I know this has been, this has been a long, well thought out, due diligence period. And with a lot of very highly qualified firms that have come here too. And we appreciate everyone coming here, the time and effort that you have put into this. And, you know, this, this is a, this is a tough decision for us to have to make because, you know, I like to say there's, there's, there's no winners and losers in these things. And I understand there are. But I like to think that the winners in this, at the end of the day, are going to be the citizens of Upson County. Because of the, the interest that everyone has put forth into wanting to come here and be a part of something really good. So thank y'all.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing included in your packet was the, was the final four evaluation of the four firms. And obviously, we selected a, a final two that presented to you at a, at a work session. And I think you've had, there's been a couple of commissioners that have had some specific individual questions about some of the original things that were submitted as far, as far as the original submission for the RFP. I thought hopefully we've had an opportunity to answer those for you.
Yeah, I, I know that, you know, if I, you know, sometimes I will speak for the board. Sometimes y'all let me. This, this, this has really been a, literally split in hairs one. And, I mean, a lot of great firms. I mean, I think there were some great ones out there that didn't even have the opportunity to come and present to the board when we, we met with the final two. So, man, it's kind of like picking the first, the first round in the NFL draft. I mean, how can you, I mean, how do you, how do you, how do you go wrong, you know? So with that, is, is there a, a motion on the architectural firm to, to help us with this project?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve IPG for our design firm for the courthouse project.
Okay, I have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Jones, any discussion?
Chairman, I have one item. You, you've kind of hit the points that I was gonna mention. But, you know, I do want to say that I think both of these firms would have done a great job or could do a great job for us. For me personally, it was, it was really who I felt would be the best candidate to work with our end users. Because at the end of the day, this, you know, this isn't for, this, you know, us or each of these board members, it's for the community. So that was, that was my thought process behind this. And I know I've worked closely from the get-go for both the contractor and design selection. So I, I echo what you said, I appreciate everybody who submitted RFPs. And I look forward to getting going with the design process.
Any other discussion? There being no further discussion, I have a motion made and seconded to approve the selection of IPG to be the architectural firm for this project. Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Chairman Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Really, thank y'all. Your, your presentations were awesome. And, you know, you know, while, you know, you may not have gotten this, I hope that, you know, that you'll be a winner with another community. Because I know there's a lot of stuff going on out in that world today. And that the bandwidth that you now don't have to apply to us, you can apply to somebody else. And I look forward to seeing you do a great project for somebody else. Thank y'all, I really do mean that. Okay? All right, next on the agenda is the, where's my glasses? Our comments. So with that, Jason, the master.
Yeah, sorry, so I'm a little under the weather, as the board knows. But I, I, I won't, I, I don't have any updates or comments. I, I've had, I've shared several updates to the board over the last couple of days via email. A lot of information to consume about a couple of projects that we're working on. My voice doesn't have the bandwidth for it tonight in public comment. But I just do, you know, as our final meeting of the year, I just want to say one last thank you to my staff. It's been an extraordinarily prosperous year, busy year, difficult year. So I hope all of my staff has a great time with their family over the holidays, to the extent that they can spend time with their families. I know several people in the room will be working shifts on Christmas, will be thinking about them as they're out there protecting us as we go about our celebrations. So I just wanted to let them know that, that I appreciate them and I thank them, I really enjoy working with them.
Okay, Ms. Jones, do you have anything you need from us? It's the last time you'll see us together as a group this year.
No, I don't have everything that I need, but I do want to say thank you for the reappointment. And I wanted to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. And to just ask that you all, we all just show gratitude for our existence and our being and what we have, because we're very fortunate.
Ms. Jones?
Briefly, for Heath and our firm, it's been a pleasure working with y'all 21, each year. One of you felt like we've gotten a lot done. And we look forward to 2022 and working closely with y'all, I think. Without, you know, without any need to be said, 22 is gonna be an exciting time in this community. We look forward to doing whatever we can for the county. Thank you for your confidence in us and look forward to working with y'all.
I know it's been, it's, I mean, you know, it's, I don't think it's been a challenging year for you. I just know you guys have had to spend a lot more time with us this year because of a lot of the stuff that we've got going on. So, I mean, you know, I, you know, it's a good time to reflect on where we're at and where we're going. So I, I look forward to, to seeing the, the fruits of our labor moving forward with Homestead exemption, with the, you know, making, you know, the redistricting, I think is pretty much a done deal. We've covered all that. The getting the, getting our courthouse put back together, I mean, I know that's, that's starting to take up a lot of y'all's time too. As we have discussions about liquidated damages and where we're at. You know, we know what Kentucky just went through this past week. It doesn't sound like that's gonna have too much of an additional delay on things. But we, we gotta hold our feet to the fire. And then just the stuff that you deal with daily, I know you, you're constantly, you know, inundated with us calling, your staff calling. And I just appreciate y'all always making time to, to deal with this. Because it's not just us, I mean, you know, I mean, I know every office in this county keeps you busy. So I appreciate what y'all do.
Thank you.
Commissioner Watson, we'll start with you, Case.
All right. You got a couple of comments. First, I'd like to say, you know, to my constituents, there's been a few reaching out to me. I've read the past weeks, obviously, for all the hot items that we have on the plate. But just for everyone else, you know, the best way to reach out to me and, you know, all of the commissioners for that matter, would be to contact the office. And they'd be glad to give you my number, email address. I'm also on social media, so if anybody does want to reach out and direct messaging, please do. I'm always available and I will do my best to return your calls if I miss them. So just wanted to put that out there. Definitely want to, you know, thank the staff. Y'all have done a great job this year, we've got a lot on the plate and we've got even more coming up, so get ready. And I'm not sure if the sheriff's still there, but.
He's still here.
Thank you. Him and all of his staff, I appreciate all, all that you guys do. I hope everybody has a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Ms. Jones?
Well, y'all stole all of my things.
All right, Ms. Jones?
But, but I, I, I just want to kind of echo a few of the things that, that was brought up here by, with staff, you know, you know, and, and all county employees and departments. And Sheriff's Department, you know, our War Department, so all our different departments in the county. You know, we've, we've had a unique last two years. And I am so looking forward to getting back to business and doing things. We got a lot of great things happening in this community. And I think next year is gonna be, is gonna bring big dividends for the county as far as the things happening in, in Upson County. And I'm really excited about the Homestead exemption, getting put on the ballot. If it comes back from the Capitol, we can get it approved and get it on the ballot. I think that's gonna, you know, the easiest way to, to, to impact the constituents throughout the county is, is on that, on that tax notice. And, and when you're a homeowner or a landowner and you get those exemptions, it's gonna make a difference. And so the proof's gonna be in the pudding on that one. And I just look, I'm, I'm really excited about that, to get back, get it on the ballot. And I can't think of any reason why a homeowner would vote against that. But moving from that, you know, I, I hope every, everyone has a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I don't think this is the last time this board will meet, because we gotta deal with EMS issues. So probably make some special call meetings. And the only other thing I'd like to say is about our budget. Alan, Jason, thank you guys. You know, the only thing I'd say about the budget is, you know, this is my, this is my sixth budget. It's really my seventh one, but, but I was not allowed to participate. I got to sit in after newly elected and hear before I took office. So, but this is probably one of the most transparent budgets I've ever done with the county. Which is, so if, if people don't know what's going on, they're really just not paying attention. I don't know any better way we can, could communicate what was going on. Secondly, I'd like, the only thing I would like to add that, guys, I want to start a little bit earlier next year. So we're not crunching. I mean, I know we, you know, just, I like to say it starts maybe thirty years early, just to buy us a little time to get, to, to get to that point. So we're, we're not crunching at the end. Other than that, you know, I'm looking forward to 2022. That's all I got.
Ms. Jones?
All right, appreciate everybody coming, appreciate everybody watched. I want to wish everybody out there a Merry Christmas and thank God for all the county employees we have. They're all great people. I do remember a tornado that came through this county two years ago. And you all remember how hard it was. I want you to remember in your prayers of people that have lost everything, complete towns. We were very lucky that it bypassed our, our downtown area. And please just keep all those people in your prayers. That's it. Merry Christmas.
Mr. Wilder?
I just, I, I just want to join the rest of the team and think in the staff and the finance director, everybody that, so, that worked so diligently to get the budget and everything put together. They put in a lot of long hours and hard work. And I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a safe holiday season.
Thank you. And then I'll just echo the same things, I just really want to appreciate, I appreciate everybody. I mean, I, this is, you know, this is like Commissioner Ellington, the seventh one we've, we've done, so we're sat through. We have had more discussion about this budget than any other one that we've done. There's been, it's been a lot, there's been a lot more activity around this one. And for obvious reasons, I mean, it's, you know, when you're looking at a six and a half percent increase of a prior year, you know, we've had some really prosperous years over the past few years that allowed us to do a lot of things that we've been able to do. So, you know, I know we'll get there. I, I, I'm, I'm charging everybody that works for this county. I don't care if it's, if it's me or Jason, Jessica, you know? I know our sheriff is on board with this and, and Alan and just everybody. You know, those of you that are responsible for the financial management of your offices, you know, the best thing you can do this year is take care of your people and keep a sharp pencil. You know, because, you know, it's, you know, it's in tough times out there. Go to, I mean, we're seeing the price of gas going down a little bit. But, you know, go to the grocery stores and all that. And, you know, and while, you know, just, and to every employee out there, when you're doing, doing your, be efficient, be good at what you do, be mindful of the equipment you work with, take care of it. Spend those dollars like they're your own. Because, you know, because if you're a property owner in this town, that is your dollar. So I just challenge you to do that. And I, I certainly appreciate our law enforcement officers, I hope y'all know that. You know, I have a unique perspective on it because of my family relationship with somebody that does what you do. And I hear usually at Sunday dinner, some of the stuff that, that, you know, he doesn't necessarily enjoy talking about. Or, you know, there are things we read about in the paper and stuff like that. And you guys are out there doing it every day. So I really appreciate what you do. And I hope that this shows you how much we appreciate what you do. Okay? Okay?
May I speak, Mr.?
Sure.
Thank you.
You're a paying member.
I know this has been a, a lot of discussion on this budget year and I'm just thankful that we've got a relationship in our community that we can have those discussions and that they're civil and that we always seem to work through whatever issue comes up and I applaud you for that. Thank you so much for hearing our concerns. And as I've said all along, I think that the number one investment we can make in our community is the safety of our people. And passing the budget that you passed tonight and showing the support that you've shown for law enforcement, that I think that shows that that is our priority. And my pledge is to do the best job we can do. And of course, we've always been the best stewards of the money that we're allotted, that we can possibly be. But this year is especially a special year and we appreciate you coming on in and thanking you very much for packing that it's, it's a big, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, Sheriff. I mean, you know, one of the, one of the unique things about our community over other communities is the relationship that we have with our sheriff. And so it's a good relationship. I know at times, you know, we may not always agree on anything, but we walk out, we're always friends. So, you know, but it's with a servant heart. With that, I have nothing else. Hope everybody has a Merry Christmas. Anybody else, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Adjourn, thank y'all. And stand by for these special call meetings. We're still live.
Guys, thank y'all for the opportunity. Y'all have a Merry Christmas.
Keep swinging the, keep swinging the bat. Keep swinging the bat.